For the purpose of taking minutes, is there anyone else present who wishes to record minute? Record the meeting. Seeing none. To the attendees of the meeting, a sign in sheet is being circulated. The board asks you please sign in to indicate your attendance at today's meeting. The select board meetings can be viewed by going into the cable videos icon on the homepage of the town website. And lastly, on Monday, September twenty second, the board will hold a meeting at seven P M. Which is today. The next select board work session will be on Monday, September.
Fifteenth, a week ago.
October.
Yes.
Yeah, October.
This is not correct. Thank you.
October.
Revised. On Monday, October sixth, the board will hold a meeting at seven P M. The next select board work session will be on Wednesday, October fifteenth at six P M. Please check the meeting postings on the town website. For information to either join via Zoom or for the location of the particular meeting or work session.
Is that the, is that a Zoom on the fifteenth?
You're on Board Docs, I'm looking at the Word document. Sam updated one and up the other.
The last Zoom meeting, I thought it was actually helpful to see in town hall.
All right, thank you for that, Madam Vice Chair and Clerk. Uh, with that, we'll open up if there are any citizen questions or comments. Seeing none. There are no minutes to discuss, so we will jump straight into new business and start with the water tank debt schedule. Vote to award the ban for the water tank and I will turn that over to Mr. Artunie.
Thanks, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Um, tonight, Morgan, when all our treasure collectors here to speak on behalf of, um, the debt that we had approved at town meeting back in May for the water mains and some of the surrounding streets, um, at Lockland Land and those surrounding streets, the water main, uh, rebuilt. These are very old water mains that have had, um, heat issues, water main breaks, um, outages. Um, and we were, we were granted the ability to move forward at town meeting, as everyone remembers. Um, cost for the project, um, initially, um, if anything should be below budget, we don't know all the, all the costs will come in as we go through the project, but, uh, the amount of money that was allocated is appropriate for the, for the work. Um, and I don't want to steal, uh, collector's treasure as thunder, but we've got a really good interest rate as a result of the great work that team's doing on the financial side of it, um, for this project, so, um, this coupled with, we're looking for ban, we're taking out a ban, which is short term borrow, interest only. Um, and the town, the team's looking at a long term, um, debt taking for both this and the water tank that we approved last year, the year prior. Um, to have the most advantageous position when we go out to market. Cons to scale, where you take, the better the, the rate, the better the deal, yeah, so. But that's the overall strategy for right now. Anyone else here to have approval of the select board so we can move forward? So if anyone has any questions?
So just to refresh my memory.
Yep.
Um, is the money basically all spent and we're taking down the, the entire two point four at once, or are we gonna take the two point four as we spend it in chunks?
So the two point four is being delivered on, uh, September thirtieth. Um, I do not believe, I think one invoice has gone out, I can't speak to that, Greg, Greg can probably speak more to that. Uh, I do believe one invoice, uh, went out, uh, so the money has not really been spent yet, but we're, we didn't want to supplement the general fund, uh, supplement the project with a general fund to, to plead a cash reserve, so we're borrowing before the project starts.
So this is, uh, where we got into the, the interest earnings having some sort of limitation compared to the interest expense of the bonds, is that right? Cause we can invest the proceeds prior to spending them at, uh, taxable rates.
Correct.
Which in theory are higher.
So that's, that's another angle to it, so, um, you know, instead of our cash reserves being depleted because the project's supposed to be going pretty quickly, I think, you know, most of the money will be spent by the time winter comes, so, um, in order to have the two point four million in the bank is definitely a, uh, an asset to the town versus spending all that and not getting money back until we spend. Um, because you're right, if we're able to take out a, a, a ban at two point six nine percent, which is what this net interest cost is, and we're able to accumulate a little bit of earnings on top of that, that'll just, you know, boost the interest income for the town for, for, for the time being.
What's the investment plan in the interim before the money gets spent?
Uh, well, money will be spent pretty quick, but it's sitting in, in money market accounts right now to be, to be liquid.
So you mentioned two point six, so I see a seventeen thousand dollar premium for the winning bidder, for example. Is that seventeen thousand per thousand, or is that seventeen thousand on the two point four million?
So we receive a premium, so the, the borrower who is, the lender is giving us a, a premium to take out the, the, the ban with them. Uh, each of the, uh, the bidders, uh, you know, offered different interest rates, different premiums for, uh, for this bond anticipation note. And, um, the seventeen thousand not only was the, the highest, uh, premium that we, that we were offered, um, but the best coupled with the interest rate as well.
So that money is what the winning bidder is giving to the town?
Correct, in order to take out the.
To juice up their offer.
Exactly.
It's like reverse points on a mortgage or something?
Right, exactly, yes.
Okay.
Yes, but that, most of that chunk goes towards the issuance costs. Um, so the, the bid print, um, our bond counsel, our advisors. So most goes towards that, and then the net of the premium to the interest costs actually nets against what we spend on, on interest when it matures in April.
Okay.
So then, and I see that's net interest costs.
Correct, and that's how the ban is awarded, based on interest costs.
Is that, uh, is that the four percent adjusted for nine months roughly, is that the idea?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a whole bunch of different things in, in a calculation that interest, interest costs, you know, takes into time, takes into the, the coupon amount, takes into account the, uh, the premium, a, a whole bunch of different, different variables go into that. Uh, but as you can see, the, uh, fidelity was the next best net interest cost, and that was just under, uh, three percent, so, uh, it was far and away the best offer by a truist that we were able to get down to two point six nine.
What's the difference, sorry, between rate and reoffer?
Uh, that, I am not a hundred percent sure. Um, I don't think the, um, the reoffer is, is taken, is, is relevant to, to this discussion. I don't think it's put into the, uh, I think it's just a coupon that you, that you need to look at and, uh, the price, the price percentage, which, which that will go into, you know, what we get for a, a, um, a premium.
Oftentimes, reoffer is what the underwriter sells to the public buyer. And so you can see that interest rate is a little bit lower than the interest rate we're paying because the, the seller has a little cut in there.
So they're netting the difference, that's their profit.
Part of it, yeah.
For the risk, sure. Um, and the other thing I noticed though, it said there's no right to repay, or prepay. Is that standard?
That is standard with, with bans because they're short term, so, um,
Okay.
there's, there's really no sense in, in repaying when you're able to hold the cash and, and gain interest on that.
And short term borrowing right now is advantageous, and if anything, I think we're gonna go beyond the eight months likely.
Possibly, yes.
Due to our long term strategy on the long term debt. Okay, and I have one more question, but I'll open up to everybody else first.
So as, as we're discussing, I'll just hand this up to you guys, this will be, uh, the documents here, uh, the first two. Our view, I'll just show there just for the clerk, and here are the rest of the documents as well.
Um, just a quick question, shall I make sure I heard this correctly? So this, the, the, um, the due date for this is April fifteenth to twenty sixth, so next year.
Correct.
And you just said go beyond the eight months? So would we have to, would this have to be reissued?
We'd reissue another ban in total of five point four.
Listen.
So we'd go through this all over again?
We'd do this all over again, whether it was a bond or, or a ban, so whatever is most advantaged, advantageous to the, to the town at the time of, of when we're gonna either reissue or we're gonna go out for the full bonding. Uh, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll see, kind of have all our cards laid out front, let's see what would be best for us. Um, you know, there's always the option of, uh, not prepaying, but paying down a little bit of the principal in order to take out less, which we would do, uh, if we took out a bond in the first year or two. Um, so there's a lot of different angles that we can play if we wanna try and, uh, reduce the, the amount of the borrowing come, come April. So it depends on what kind of route we wanna go, but I, I have a call with the advisors this week and kind of lay out what our thoughts are, what our worries are, and, and kind of see where their thoughts are and where the market's gonna go. You know, with such a wide, uh, variance in the net interest costs, uh, it was the day before the rates actually dropped. Um, so it was, I wanna say it kind of advantageous for us to, to issue the day before the rates dropped because a lot of these, uh, issuers were kind of, you know, I think the, the consensus was like ninety percent that the rates were gonna drop, so truist kind of jumped in, was like, well, we know that the rate's gonna drop, let's lock something in now. Um, whereas the others were being a little bit more cautious, um, and had a, had a higher rate overall.
So did the, the bidders, especially this truist, give any indication who their investors were, do they, they sell to individual investors of their institution, or do they have an institution that's interested?
I'm sure it's all the above, um, that's something that on their side, I can't speak to, to their business, but you know, I'm sure there are people that wanna increase their portfolio with, uh, tax exempt bonds, so, um, it could be, it could be institutions, it could be individuals, so everyone invests in that.
Okay. Well, it certainly looks like it's, you have four bids, so it's competitive, which is reassuring. Um, did we invite others beyond this to participate and they just didn't?
In hundreds, yeah, it's, it's, it's released by our advisors to, uh, all companies, um, institutions that would like to invest in these things. Uh, it's put out to get, you know, maximum coverage, that, that's more advantageous to the town, so they sent it out to pretty much everyone in their network.
Okay.
Just think too, our advisors are, are right hand people when we go through the process, Morgan runs the, runs point, but they're right there to answer questions and strategize with us.
We're only too many questions for them.
No, too many questions.
We've been in good hands all along. This is, similar, same group helped us with the, uh, the water tank bans that we took out as well, and they'll help us with the long term debt or any additional bands, um, of course, next year.
All right, I just had two other questions, we've got two motions before us, and I'm not entirely sure I understand the difference. The first one, I understand, cause Michelle has to sign. But how is that different than the second one, there's a bunch of other closing doc, basically closing documents that we're gonna have?
Those are ancillary parts to it, if you approve the, uh, the sale of, of, of the, uh, the ban itself, all these kind of fall into that, um, so I don't think that we need to, you know, further, um, move to, to, you know, sign the rest of the documents. I think if you disapprove the, the ban, it's, it's, uh, it's satisfactory there.
And that first motion, that's accurate, where it says vote to adopt the vote?
No, note.
Yeah, the first.
Should be the note, right?
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I think so, I think it.
Well, the first document is vote of the select board, so that may be what it's referring to.
That's, yes, we talked about that, we thought that.
And that's something we don't wanna burden ourselves of reading from start to finish on it.
It's a long one.
It's a long one.
It includes it by reference.
Same thing with that one.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to my question, it really should be vote to adopt the vote. Because that's what the document said.
Vote to adopt the vote, yes.
I think so.
Says select board vote, that's the document.
Cause a very long vote, that's in Board Docs, I believe.
It's called a vote?
Yes, it's in Board Docs.
And it's titled some, I believe.
Yeah, the first, the first document under administrative content is vote to, vote of the select board.
So vote to adopt the vote of the select board.
Right. And we certainly don't wanna read that, uh, for the meeting. Uh, although it's probably, when it says adopt the vote, it should probably be capital V vote, but I think that's kind of trivial at this point.
Yep.
So do we need a motion?
We always need a motion.
Vote to adopt the vote prepared by bond counsel before the board in connection with the sale of the town's September two thousand twenty five general obligation bond anticipation notes and sign the related closing documents and for the clerk of the select board to sign.
Second. Other discussion? I'd just say as a reminder, for anybody who's listening, this is related to Article seventeen, which was, or sorry, yeah, Article seventeenth, which was approved at our last town meeting. So this is just formally going through the process of something that was approved by the entire town since it is taking debt. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? As is motions.
Vote to approve the sale of the town's two point four million dollar general obligation bond anticipation notes dated September thirtieth, twenty five and sign related closing documents.
Second. Any other discussion?
It's interesting, it's, it's, uh, got these documents here which require us to stipulate stuff as of September thirtieth, which actually is in the future. But I guess we would, we would be obliged, we're obliging ourselves to inform them if something happens between now and then.
Who, who we advise, who would we tell? I don't know what you're saying.
Probably the, the attorneys, and they would.
If there's an issue, we'll work with our attorneys, that's correct.
Yeah, there's a long list of, of events which require disclosure if they occur. Uh, they're all pretty low probability for Topsfield.
Yeah. That, that's, that's why they, they do that, so we can sign the documents if there is a disclosure that we need to let them know about, um, that's why we include that as well.
And you said September thirtieth is when we get the cash, that's why that, that day.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Do we have a second?
Uh, did I second? You did, did I do?
Okay, aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None, and no abstentions, thank you.
Of course.
So seven documents first assigned down the line?
Yep, uh, there's a couple, there's a couple duplicates, there's two duplicates of that as well, they like to see multiple copies of them, so we just keep it packed together.
Okay.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a big, a big milestone.
Let's say it's a good win for the town too, it's a good, a good read.
Big win.
Now, I have a question, uh, is debt mountain a actual term?
It's, it's something that I took from my, my, my previous job well, so, that's what, that's what my boss there called it.
It's not my favorite mountain.
You don't wanna climb, you wanna climb, you'll come down. That's one they don't wanna peek on, you know?
So this presumes we just keep paying off the debt that we have incurred as of this point in time.
It's not good to, to default on the, on the debt you've already taken out, you wanna follow the schedule that's on there, so.
Cause it is possible we take out more debt in the future to kind of re, re-peak the mountain, so to speak.
Well, I'm sure there'll be something to pay for again someday.
With Masco.
All right, let's move on to item number B. Letter B, Topsfield Fair Law Enforcement Update and Traffic Management Plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, every year, um, our police chief, fire chief, and the public safety team, um, starting literally the day after the prior year fair, working very hard and putting together, uh, the safest possible plan for our Topsfield Fair each year. They have done an outstanding job over the many years that they've been in their leadership positions enhancing and bringing in more safety elements and working with the select board and the community around traffic mitigation and improvements, and so, um, prior to each fair, like to have Chief Hubby come and talk about what efforts are underway, what efforts you should expect during the fair, um, and answer any questions the board might have, so with that, I introduce Chief Hubby, um, our police chief. And, I don't know, Chief, if you wanted to kind of give an overview to start with, and then maybe open up the questions thereafter?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Town Administrator, Mr. Chairman, select board members. So, uh, as the town administrator, I said, before we commence the operation which is Friday, October third, I'd like to come in and give an overview of our, um, evacuation plans, our operational plans. I printed out a hard copy of all the documents, um, Ms. Bron, um, uploaded them onto the Board Docs under Public View, so they can be shared. So I just wanted to come in and have this opportunity to go over the operational plan, traffic plan, and answer any questions that you may have. So, as I said, we start on our Friday, October third at four o'clock. Our operation starts to Sunday prior to that, where we do at ten P M to two A M, where we monitor the activity of the uh, Fiesta Show's staff, while they are prepared to set up, so there's no, uh, excessive, uh, fights and drinking down there and stuff, so we do have security from ten to two that starts on Sunday, uh, the week prior. Uh, then we get into the operational plan, uh, we post no parking signs, they'll go up two or three days, uh, before, uh, that Friday date. Uh, we cover twenty one different streets, uh, in the town, no parking on either side of the roadways for the eleven day event. We try to get the signs down immediately following, but constantly, um, we post in those signs if we have rain and wind and stuff, so everybody will be notified properly. We generally, uh, we'll ticket cars, uh, abuses of it, and we very rarely, I don't know, like to have ever tow the vehicle, so we're trying to be as user friendly as possible, and if we can make notification to somebody, but again, these are the people that are attending the, um, event, it's not for the residents of the town of Topsfield, so, um, just so everybody's clear on that, that we're not going to ticket and tow residents' vehicles. Then we get into, uh, uh, what we did, uh, twelve, uh, actually thirteen years ago, we came up with a very extensive evacuation route on five different streets. We would actually send all the traffic in, uh, in a variety of different directions. On the egress of every parking lot, every parking lot is designed, the exit to go in a different direction, so there'd be no bottlenecking of the vehicles, so we did a very comprehensive plan. The state DOT makes us up Topsfield Fair evacuation signs that are posted on those five different, uh, throughways in the town of Topsfield. White sign, blue circle, evacuation route, Topsfield Fair, so those are posted, so if you drive around, you see, you'll say, oh, wow, that's, that's one of the evacuation routes. Uh, our traffic plan, uh, changes, uh, over time, uh, on the weekends when they're running the bus routes. Uh, we have to modify all of our traffic plans, so what we do is that we have one satellite, uh, lot, Fairview Parking Lot up on, uh, Route one, around number one sixteen Boston Street. Uh, if you're coming into town, it's on the right hand side, after you go to Death Valley, you come up to the crest, uh, Fairview Parking Lot is there.
Oh, that's the big, the big field?
Yes, yeah, so that's, uh, one parking lot, uh, there, and so people pay to park there, they load them up on school buses, uh, my, uh, thought process has always been, uh, that's, you know, I guess asking a lot of somebody to pay for parking, put them on a school bus, and then sit in more traffic, and so over the last couple of years, I've really made a, a strong effort to create a bus lane so that you can come right down Route one and go into parking lot A and get dropped off safely, so when those buses start commencing on their operations, we actually split Route one. So we take all the traffic on Southbound, we detour them down, uh, South Main Street to Salem Road, they come back up up the hill, and then they'll continue on Southbound. We split our Route one, uh, all motor vehicles, uh, will go in the left hand lane, which is actually the Southbound Lane heading north, and the buses take the Northbound Lane, go straight, take a quick right hand turn into parking lot, uh, A. So that has worked well for the last few years, um, so it's really proven out that the buses don't sit in traffic, uh, it's extremely safe, it does take more police officers, more signage, and so we have that all, we set up a whole thing, we have five different motorcycles that operate on the weekends. We utilize them to shut down Route one, make sure it's safe to do so, and then we, uh, we switch the lanes of, of, uh, flow of traffic, so that takes place only on, uh, weekends, uh, when that lot is, uh, open. On the second weekend, we, in preparation of a, a large number of visitors, we also have a second satellite lot, which is North Shore Community College. So we cannot take those buses and put them back on Route one, so they actually go to the back roads through Middleton, uh, they go each street, they come up through, uh, over onto Washington Street, and then they come in the back way, way to River Road, uh, River Road up to the top of Prospect, but then they continue on River Road down, uh, Salem Street, and then they go Salem Road, and then they'll take a, a left, and then they'll go on to South Main and go across, so we have them coming in a different direction, uh, so we have buses coming in two different directions, we have traffic routes, and that's why it takes a lot of barricades and additional offices to actually, um, uh, prevent motorists from using those and bottlenecking those areas to get the, uh, that in, but last year, we didn't have to use it because we had ample parking on the fairgrounds. The year before that, we had to use it, plus, uh, we actually opened up a third lot at Masco at the last minute for three hours because traffic was at a standstill, uh, more people were turning around going home than they were, uh, attending the fair, it was that bad, and everybody saw that, so we've made an honest effort to actually try to look at everything, every opportunity we have to reroute traffic. Uh, we use motorcycles, uh, to actually move traffic. We'll put them on side streets, we'll escort them to open parking spaces, we constant, constantly monitor how many spots we have at the five different parking lots, uh, that the fair has. We also have numerous parking lots that are independently owned, uh, that people park, and we actually will try to guide people into every vacant spot, whether it's independently owned or fair owned, we try to get the cars off the streets into, uh, the parking spots and, and try to minimize the congestion throughout town. So that is all taking place, so we, you're going to see when you drive around town on the weekends, there's thirteen different locations that we're gonna put up bar, uh, barricades. So if you drove through some town, anytime after six thirty in the morning on a Saturday or a Sunday, you'll see road closed, road closed, road closed, uh, and there's for resident access only, which actually brought us to having out these placards, uh, that I wanted to, to show everyone, we'll be advertising this on our website for everyone to stop by the police department Monday through Friday, eight to four, and pick up their road closure access. This does not give them a right to go through, through ways that aren't allowable on a, uh, three hundred and sixty five year basis, but again, temporarily road closures to go around the barricades, or to go around a police officer, so they can wave this out, and the police officer won't just point them into a different direction, they'll let them, uh, go through the road closure, so uh, it worked out last year very well, and, uh, we wanna continue it, it's a different color this year, so don't take out the twenty four pass, cause the green ones, uh, are not gonna be allowed, so we have to switch the colors every single year, so. Uh, but there's a lot of streets that you're gonna see with, uh, road closures, road access, barriers up there, signage, uh, detours in different directions, so it takes a lot of work, uh, anywhere from six, six thirty in the morning, if you're out and about walking around, you'll see me out there putting up these barricades and stuff, it's, uh, it's one of the jobs I like to do, so.
You love, you love this time of year, I'm sure.
I really do, honestly. Uh, there's four different locations, we're gonna have traffic control offices that are located. Uh, they'll be on South Main Street, Salem Road, Raleigh Bridge Road and Hill Street, Washington Street at River Road, and Salem Road at Boston Street, so we position offices there, so road closure, people go around it, there's an officer a little further up the road, says you need to turn around, so. Um, it's, most of it is, uh, well received, uh, we're trying to work with the GPS mapping systems and all the uh, different companies that actually take the traffic and then reroute them to the side streets, then they get met with road closures, and so they get frustrated, so we're trying, we just, uh, obtained, uh, straight contact, uh, with, uh, some of the mapping, uh, companies to actually see if they'll actually take all those detours off from Topsfield for the eleven day, keep everybody on Route one.
That'd be cool.
And, uh, people don't really realize, if you stay on Route one, we can get you to a parking spot quicker than you driving through all the streets of of Topsfield, and that's proven out. Uh, this year, we're using, uh, fourteen different communities to assist us with police officers. We also, uh, use the Massachusetts State Police, the ATF, and the Environmental Police to assist us in uh, traffic, and also all the, uh, the gates and walking around all the offices, uh, that are required at the, uh, uh, command and speak, uh, crowds at the Topsfield Fair. During the week, we have anywhere from twenty one to twenty four police officers, on weekends, we have anywhere from forty to forty four officers, um, in our busy times from noon In our busy times from noon time, maybe just six, seven o'clock at night. So. Uh, we also have secured the, uh, the community action team, uh, the cat team from the state police. So the major up here, the whole command staff, uh, is very accommodating to us. So the community action team, they send in three to six, uh, troopers free of shots to the town of Topsfield. For the day shift and the evening shift based upon their schedule. So you may see a trooper show up at a house, a bank alarm, a medical aid. So they respond to calls as well as help us mitigate any problems at the Topsfield Fair. So we have more police coverage during this eleven days than we ever have throughout the whole year. Uh, where we have our traditional two officers on and then we have three to six troopers. Uh, and we, we position them around town because it's very difficult to, to move. And when we have traffic backed up and stuff. So we'll strategically put somebody, you know, down Ipswich Road area, put somebody up on Haver Road area. We'll put them in the different areas of town so they can rapidly respond. And we provide a really good service to our residents, which is first and, first and foremost. Uh, we're bringing in the mounted patrol unit. In addition to the cat team, the mounted patrol, they send two troopers on horses. Uh, every day of the fair, they patrol the parking lots, the rail trail. Uh, and also they'll come down the Route one and hang out and stuff. So they're very, uh, community oriented, uh, very accessible. So which is a nice, and this year we're bringing in the drone unit. So it's going to be a, it's a portable drone detection unit. Uh, we've had some problems over the last year, especially when we have popular concerts, opening of concerts in the grandstand. We had three drones fly over last year and it's just like, what is the intent?
So this unit is looking for drones. This isn't a unit using drones.
Uh, this is a unit that's looking for drones, identifies the wing number. And then we, last year we identified one and we went and knocked on their residence address. He was sitting at his kitchen table playing with his drone. We like, you can't do this.
How did you find me?
That means it's a registered drone, which they're supposed to be over a certain size, right?
Uh, so anything, any drone that, uh, you know, is capable of this detecting. Yep. So, so, uh, we are bringing them in. Um, also they're going to man it, uh, during the busy times during the opening concerts. And also during the busy second weekend and stuff. So that all comes, uh, free with the state police. So it's just a phenomenal operation, it's a phenomenal relationship that we have, uh, with the Massachusetts State Police. The commander, the major up at Troop A here, uh, it's just been wonderful to, to work with. The last component is that we're, we also bring in, we're going to continue our. Uh, we bring in two explosive ordinance detection, uh, troopers. So they have all their robots, they have all the suits. Uh, they, we bring in them with the civil support team that is attached to them. So they test the quality of, of the air. So and every single package, uh, is checked prior to entering the fairgrounds. So if they have a U P S delivery, uh, we stop them, they unload all the packages. We send in two K nine, uh, E O D dogs and technicians. We send in C S T for the quality of the air around the packages and they actually sniff out all of the packages. So that happens at two different locations down at Cattle Gate and also Maple Street. Uh, at each of the point of ingress, uh, for vehicles, we do undercarriage checks. Every vehicle gets stopped, identified. They have the proper, um, placards on the vehicles for them to enter the, the grounds. We also do undercarriage checks on each of the vehicles. Um, and that is at Maple Street and Cattle Gate as well. And we also have bag checks at every point of ingress, five different locations where everyone's bag is checked. Uh, prior to entering, uh, the fairgrounds. The, um, this year I'm gonna, I'm taking it to a new level. I've contacted the Department of Homeland Security. Uh, they're coming in and doing a vulnerabilities test and a risk assessment of the fairgrounds. And to come in, so I've already met with them once. They're coming back on Monday to do a more thorough walkthrough. They're going to be writing out the whole operational plan of stuff that we might have missed. Um, and then they're going to actually come when the fair is operational to see how everything's going. So we're trying to mitigate any, uh, possible problem that is foreseen or not foreseen. You know, that's, uh, because everything's changing in the world and stuff and we're, we're looking at vehicle, um, barrier devices. Um, again, so a car can't drive through large crowds of people waiting to buy tickets. So we're looking at how to mitigate, uh, some of that stuff. We bring in the Massachusetts Emergency Management Trailer as a second. We have our communication center, but if we needed to do a unified command center. That is Park Next Door Police Station. So we have a redundant system there if everybody had to evacuate. We wanted to get everybody together, all the command staff. And then we also have another redundant system on the third floor of the police station that we could use as unified command center. If it was too hectic on the ground level, we could go to the third floor of the police station. We have the bag of phones up there, we have computers up there, we have TVs up there. So we could actually set up a whole unified command center. Uh, and run the whole operations from the third floor, uh, of the police station. So that takes place. Uh, so there's a lot of work in preparation of, uh, of setting this, this fair up. This is a continuous planning, as the town administrator said, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. I'm thinking about this. The day after we end, we're planning for the next one. We look at what went right, what went wrong, how we can manage it better. And then we just try to operationally, um, uh, move forward to the, to the next year. I will be sending you in a private document and stuff on board dogs, a two, a hundred and sixteen page emergency operations plan. Uh, so you can read through that at your spare time, but it talks about all the response plans, the mitigation plans. Uh, so you'll get, you'll receive that some of our operation, but that's a confidential document only to be shared with town administration and select board members. Uh, so you can be there because I think it's important that you understand what goes into this. Uh, the thought process, the work that we have done as the police department to try to repair and mitigate any, uh, foreseen and unforeseen. Circumstances that might come about. What people don't think about is right next to the fairgrounds is AmeriGas. They have a twenty thousand gallon propane tank sitting on Route one that only has Jersey barriers on one side of it. Seven hundred feet from the, uh, fairgrounds is the National Grid, uh, substation that controls Topsfield. And a third of Foxville. So within that short distance period of time, this fact is that I have to think about every single day of. Okay, how do we have security around these? How do we better, uh, protect, uh, those, um, those locations? That could be disastrous to us. Uh, and I already talked about the placard. Uh, so again, it's the resident access for road closure. Uh, they'll be readily available. We're going to post it on, I wanted to present tonight. We're going to put out a press release on our, our police department website, also the town's website outlining some of this. So everybody can see it. I think the more information that we put out there, the more transparent we are. Uh, with the whole community are taking a look at this and letting them know that these are just road closure access. This doesn't give you a parking pass to go into the fairgrounds or, uh, unless you're select member hook. You just take your bike and park it into my garage at the police station and walk across the street. But, so I'm just, uh.
The best way around traffic.
That's a, uh, a, a quick overview of what we have been working on, what we do every single year. And I like to come back every single year. A lot of it's a refresher. Uh, but to reiterate the key points, let you know some additional resources that we're bringing in, what we're thinking about. Uh, there's, there's only a couple acts this year for the opening concert. Thank you. Avalon is on Friday night. There's, um, Sammy Kershaw. Sammy Kershaw was on Thursday night and then there's a Taylor Swift story on Wednesday night. So those are the three big acts in the, uh, grandstand. Budweiser Clydesdale are coming in for the first Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, they have an eight horse hitch. Uh, that is challenging demands through the hundreds of people. Uh, there takes five to six police officers to escort them around on the grounds. Uh, they do have an on grounds parade, uh, every night of the week at five o'clock. That takes additional offices to protect, uh, all the, uh, feargoers from, from the vehicles traveling through the, uh, o- open grounds. But we're hoping for good weather, hoping for good crowds and hoping for a, a real positive experience for everyone. I did talk to the owner of the Fiesta Shows. I always touch base with him and ask him, have they had any problems? What are some of the issues that they've come across for their whole season? And, uh, they really haven't had any problems. When they went Framingham, it was difficult to fill all the, uh, officer spots for the details. But other than that, everybody's been great. They haven't had any agitatives or any issues. We always have to be prepared for, um, uh, those people. We also have to be prepared for any protesters. And we have an isolated area by the cemetery, on town property, right on Route one, that if they want to protest. We're all for freedom of speech. We just need to make sure they are safe, uh, and the, um, people that are attending the fair are safe as well.
That's the area across the street from the police department, police station?
It's across the street from AmeriGas, the cemetery, oh yeah, uh, next to us.
That was my question for Mr. Hook, where the cemetery was.
Right across the street.
Formerly on the Park and Cemetery Commission, Mr. Metz. Please have a little more respect for my, my history of service.
Knowledge in the future. But, um, that parking lot, uh, public parking, believe, right across the street from Saint Rose. Sometimes people park there and they walk down the rail trails. That, that's still public parking, right? It's not, there's no charge for that?
No, it's all commuted a lot, which we refer to it as during the weekday, but it's open to all anyone.
Trust me, it fills up by like six thirty two A M. So.
And it's full until like eleven.
One thing the fair is starting new this year is they worked out an agreement with M B T A, anybody that wants to take the train in. Uh, from the Boston area or from the cluster area, they were actually, they can buy a ticket. It gives them entrance into the fairgrounds. It gives them a, a free bus ride from there for the M B T A to pick them up at the Beverly Dealey. And bring them in. They're going to come down ninety-seven. And they were working out the logistics. I think they're going to put one in the ninety-seven lot. And loop around and drop the people off right at the midway point of them. So.
It's if you didn't have enough to do.
Yeah, so it's one more thing to manage. They've only sold twenty tickets so far, so. You know what? I, I like the, uh, thought process. I like the, you know what? Uh, now we, you can take a training. Get a free admission into the fair, we're not free admission, but it's all part of a bundle of package, so.
A wonderful program. Um, and it's amazing how sophisticated. And how all encompassing this thing has become. And what you've done with it, in my opinion. Worrying about a half a million people over the course of ten days is, uh, is a bigger job than most people. Ever, ever think about. I'll give you an example. Twenty years ago. We began, the fair and the police department began to think about the fact that we need to know what trucks are bringing into the fairgrounds. And how are we going to monitor that? And twenty years ago, we didn't know how to do that. They didn't know how to stop the trucks and survey every package in every box. You've gone far beyond that over the course of twenty years. And what, what has evolved into is a huge, huge program and, uh, very sophisticated in my opinion. And, um, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
I, um, I'm, I'm impressed that you're thinking about the high risk, low probability of, uh, risks. Like, uh, the propane tank. Uh, you would not really think of that in the ordinary course of events, but that is a, a high risk event if something happened.
Or the substation across the street.
Couple of questions. So we're rerouting traffic coming southbound. But if people want to park, how are they going to get to the fair, to the parking ground?
So when they're coming down Route one, uh, they're heading north. There's parking lot D that they're going to hit first. And then they go further, then they hit parking lot C, which is the co-op. And then if they take South Main Street, turn left on us, um, Salem, there's parking lot B. So there's three lots that they would have to drive by. Uh, so we're not really restricting them. We're actually giving them more access.
And then I love that you're thinking about the millions of people coming for the sixty-five hundred residents. Uh, the letter, which was very useful, said if they'd like to, but in fact, they should come and get these, right? If an officer says, hey, where are you? And they said, no, I'm a resident. I just don't have my placard. They run the risk of not being believed or something, right?
If they do not have that, they're not going to be allowed to go on their street. And that's what we're trying to prevent, uh, that somebody trying to get to Fox Run. And they're not allowed to go down River Road. I would encourage everyone, uh, that's why I wanted to post this document, uh, onto the public view. I also want to post, uh, the press release on our website and the town's website. So people can say, oh, my street's being impacted. All those residents need to come to the police department. Now, if you're, you know, living, you know, down off from Ipswich Road, you're, you're not going to be impacted. We're not closing any roads down there. Uh, but some people, they like to have this. Because when they're driving around, they're like.
You never know.
I'm going to go on closed roads just because I can.
Uh, along those lines though, Kevin, I hope we can push this out through every avenue we have. Maybe we're going to have. Probably, we usually have a robo call the weekend before as well. This is one that I don't think can wait until the Friday before because that doesn't leave enough time for people to go and get the placards. Um, and then obviously social media and let's talk with Stephanie about if we can do one of those email blasts that we've been toying with.
That's one of the reasons I wanted to come in so early. Last year we were a little late to it, uh, but some people know about it. Uh, we, we passed out over five hundred, um, road access permits last year.
It was a great effort to get the word out. People responded. And then it, it, once it gets out, you know, people start sharing the information in their networks. And more broadly in other places. Um, so, you know, as we get a little bit closer, we're, we'll probably see a, a good amount of spike of people. Accessing, pulling these. And we'll keep track of how many are given out. And we'll certainly do a robo call and have this information.
And no matter what, we all recognize, there will be somebody who has no clue we did something about it. So we can only do as much as.
Anyone last year, Chief, that.
Well, we actually honestly, it, uh, was very well received. We didn't have any complaints and we didn't have anybody turned away that. You know, so it, it worked out well, uh, last year, so.
So where do they go, where do the citizens go to pick up these?
The police department.
Regular business hours.
And do we have, uh, what, what's the payment plan for all the services with the details with the fair?
So it's one hundred percent, uh, billed to the Topsfield Fair. There's no, the town generates ma- ma- uh, revenue because of the ten percent, uh, administrative fee. And so, you know, it's pretty hefty bill that we give to the fairgrounds.
So if a police officer comes from, say, Hamilton, I mean, works detail, he gets, reports the hours to his department or to you and you?
So basically we submit, we, it's administratively, it's a lot of work. Um, so we have the sergeant, uh, Giadano, uh, runs the operations up there. He tracks every hour. Takes all the payroll sheets, uh, gives them to my administrative assistant. That gets in, put into a spreadsheet. Every single day, we have to send that spreadsheet to each department for them to verify the officer's hours. Once it's all, all over, we send out a final one. Uh, they have seven days to verify that their payroll is correct. And then once it's totaled, we send one bill to the Topsfield Fairgrounds. They write us a, a, a check. And then we have to do bill schedules, uh, out, out to fourteen different departments. So it goes on and on and on.
So we, we pay them all ourselves and then we get reimbursed by the fair.
And we've never had any issue with the fair detailed reimbursement.
I had a conversation with Gary Wilds today. And we were talking about the fact that we've got rain forecast for Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday of this week. And Gary said, wouldn't it be wonderful if the U P Hitch River floods and floods the lower parking lot again? Wouldn't that be cool? That's a real possibility. We get a lot of rain. And that, and that will create a real problem for a lot of people that want to park down there and you won't, might not be able to, but.
Yeah, so they, they monitor that. Conservation comes in, monitors it and where we can park cars. And you'll see that we could sometimes, right today, we could park all the way to the woodline. Uh, but again, that could change. We just monitor, we, we just never know how soft it's going to be down there.
Minor subject in terms of everything else you're working on.
Well, it becomes, it becomes a big topic honestly in my life because of the fact that the more parking spots we lose in the lower levels. Creates more traffic congestion. So the, the more spots that I can, I have. Uh, so if we have a dry spell, um, I'm hoping I arrange this Tuesday, Wednesday this week. This week to dry out and be ready to go. So, yeah, I do, I do look at the twenty-one day forecast, the fourteen day forecast, so.
We, we lost like two thousand parking spots two years ago or something.
Had so many problems.
One, one other question that I'll be done. Um, are we vetting the vendors again? Cause I know we had that problem with one vendor giving out fake guns last year. Have they been told like, don't do, don't be stupid?
Has a, a, a very robust policy on what they can sell and cannot sell. Uh, they do have vendors that come in and will. Uh, they do have vendors that come in and will, uh, sell a variety of different items that are not allowed. But once we identify them, we report it to the fairgrounds, they authorize us to shut down the booth or to, uh, take the products off the shelves and stuff, so. Anything with projectiles, uh, we don't, um, like, uh, because it just causes problems. So either like, like water guns even causes those problems, because of the fact that, you know, you, what you're thinking about, you're walking down there, and you get sprayed with water, and then you're. You know, so just the littlest things sometimes with tight crowds and, uh, people is, is challenging, so we wanted to all of that, so.
Great, thank you.
And I'll just echo what Boyd said, which, uh, about, this is amazing, very comprehensive. Um, it's, it's sad that we have to worry about all the things we have to worry about right now, but I definitely feel safe going to the fair, knowing that. We have done all this planning, so thank you very much.
How about surrounding rooftops?
Uh, you know, with the recent events, we've, uh, we've taken a look at that, uh, there really isn't anything of, of a high point. From that perspective, uh, probably the tallest building in that area is the police department. That's the co-op, there's a lower level, I'm not saying somebody could not get on a rooftop, but if you really look at. Uh, it's pretty well protected with the tree lines, uh, separating away from buildings, and there's nothing that really high that. I'm concerned about at this time, but I always walk around with a five hundred and forty degree weirdness, we call it. You know, up, down, and all around and stuff, and, you know, looking for that, so.
There's a high police presence right in that area by its, by its, by how the fair is set up too, so.
Yeah, well, hopefully that's the biggest deterrent, when you have a couple fire trucks here, which is three, four police cars, motorcycles, bomb squad. Um, if you're driving down there, and you have to have a real serious intent, if you're gonna, think you're gonna break through those barriers, so.
I had a couple more questions, sure, somebody interrupted me. Just to clarify for the placards, do they go on the front door of the police station, it's the window on the left? And, and I may have missed this, do they have to bring some sort of proof of residency, like their license or something?
I don't go to that extreme.
Okay, so just.
This is a, this is very time consuming for my staff, uh, so, um, everything has to shift, but we're gonna make all the accommodations. Come in and just be honest.
Under code.
You know, uh, to give IDs and check people off, and the resident booklet, booklet, I'm not.
Understood, I just wanna make sure people knew, like, if they had to bring something.
Cars, you wanna, here you go.
Okay, alright, fair enough, and then, um, just a, a note on the GPS, um, the ways in Google. So, even, we can mark the closures, so even last year, like, sometimes I would do that to make sure it was online. So I think that's great if we get the contact, cause that is helpful.
Yeah, we do, uh, we do have the contact, whether they're cooperative or not, it's a different style, but.
And then the last thing, when you mentioned the Homeland Security's gonna do a review, if they end up changing anything to, to this plan, will you let us know?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, this whole operational plan will not change, uh, everything, some things may get enhanced, we really made an honest effort to. Uh, work with the Beverly Cash to get, uh, vehicle barriers, uh, we're gonna get a twenty foot, uh, steel barrier that we're gonna put across a roadway. We're also gonna get other portable ones, uh, but again, we're always challenged with, uh, competing against the city of Salem. Uh, for their now month-long event, uh, so.
Oh, yeah.
It is a, in any other, you know, events going on in this whole Essex County, uh, that the, uh, NEARAC and the Cash, uh, supports. Uh, so they're not actually available to us, so now we're resorting back to other types of barriers and. Something that we could just slow down a car before they came into a crowd, so, and they're coming out on Monday, we're gonna do another walkthrough and. Really try to think outside the box for this one.
Great, thank you.
Great job, I can't, I can't tell you how impressed I am with all the work that you've done and your department has done. To try to stay on top of these security issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be, like Michelle, I'd be kinda curious to see if the Department of Homeland Security comes up with anything. I'd be surprised if they did, but, cause it is very thorough, you put a lot of thought.
Yeah, you know, they, you know, I guess the vehicle access is the biggest one, but we brought it to their attention, and we looked at. The barrier devices and stuff, and we know what we need to do, um, but I, I can only do as much as I can have. For resources if it's not av- available, but we're really gonna meet for a couple hours and really think outside the box of how we can. You know, we just don't want any direct traffic, if they have to make a ninety degree turn to, you know, do something, at least it's gonna be at a low speed. And we can hopefully have offices, uh, at every single gate, and then they can actually mitigate that at that time, but, so.
Alright, thank you, Chief, I don't know, Mr. Hook, we haven't heard from you, if you have any questions?
Oh, I think this is gloriously well done, and I thank you and everyone for it.
Okay, any final thoughts or questions for the chief?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, Chief.
My number if you come up with something, is email me, call me, text me, available twenty four seven.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
We will move on to item C, Friends of the COA donation acceptance, and I'm pretty sure I know who's here to talk about that.
Yeah. Kathleen and Jack are here tonight, we have, um, some great news, uh, a few months ago, um. Jack came to, in front of this board to share with you, uh, and the community, an effort that he wanted to, to spearhead the champion, to quarterback. Um, and tonight, Jack gets to join us again with some really great news, uh, with, with what has become not just, um. A vision, but a mission that's been ultimately very successful, and it's gonna allow. For some significant improvements upstairs in the public hall that we're very excited for. Um, a lot of people in town individually, separately have come to me saying, is there, can we do a little bit more, can we make, put some curtains, AV equipment? Um, you know, different elements to enhance the space, cause it's getting some great use, and, um. Jack took the leadership, working with the COA and, and Kathleen, but really made this his personal, um. Mission to, to see this through, and, um, I'm not gonna take any more of a thunder, other than just say, thank you so much for all the work you've done, Jack, you've done amazing work.
I'd like to stop by saying thank you to all of you for having me back, you know, I don't get many second invitations. Uh, and also for your support early on, both financially and your encouragement, you know, it really jumpstarted. My effort to get this theater project underway, if you recall, it was really started as an effort to help the seniors. Deal with acoustic enhancements in the theater hall, and it became clear. That one idea like that is married to the overall success of getting a theater ready for the community and, and to put it to good use. So I have several bullet points, and I'll keep them as brief as I can, uh, regarding the theater hall enhancement project. We have successfully raised in eight, in, 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 in eight weeks fifteen thousand dollars, so we have. Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
Yes, Boyd, I think you jumpstarted this one.
No, 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 I, we don't need to go there.
Well, a broad thanks to all of you, um, uh, so with the town's match fund, we will be starting this project. At the, whatever point we start it with thirty thousand dollars in hand, and as you can imagine, that will be. While not as significant as talking about the Topsfield Fair challenges, a great amount of money to, to, uh, really get that room. Ready for whatever presentations and town events we'd like, so I'm thrilled about that. For seniors, this project is a much needed accomplishment and a relief. Making acoustic accommodations for anyone experiencing hearing loss is just a broad consideration for anybody, so to have that room. Be brought to readiness for people with hearing impairment is, for me, one of the, the more subtle and still most important aspects of it. As well, having a theater space that is accessible to the town is a major jewel in the crown that is Topsfield. That's my opinion, but I, I suspect that we'd have agreement on that, you know, the idea that we have a, a destination in town. For people to bring their creative efforts is, is, uh, I think a significant jewel in the crown. So I anticipate the expanded use of the space will be for theater, school productions, or speakers bureau perhaps, which we've been talking about. Screening movies, slideshows, and even armchair tours. So, thinking about what that room looked like five years ago with cubicles and all that dead air up above. This could be, and will be, in very short time, a pretty significant change. Um, we have three solid bids on the project, and we're ready to make the selections at the discretion and direction of the Council on Aging and the Select Board. So I think that we'll all be collaborating on making final decisions and getting the, the details and aspects in place. Um, I'd also like to offer sincere thanks to the Friends of the Council on Aging, to Kathleen, to Kevin, for all the, uh, encouragement. Um, and also the people who work quietly with me on this project, most notably Nancy Byrne. Who has been for many, many years, just somebody who will sit at the desk and get things done, the thank you notes, the appeals, the repeated printings. Um, so my great thanks to Nancy for that work. Um, so I think it is a reasonable goal at this point to picture that at Christmas time, we will have children singing on the stage. And I'm tempted to just call the practice school and get that brass band in, and on the contract as soon as possible, because it's time we use that theater for its initial intended purpose. And so with that all said, I'm open to any questions and thoughts that we have, and we can brainstorm the next steps, which I think we can make happen pretty soon.
I think it's pretty obvious, you just, you and your colleagues, uh, deserve a lot of credit, I mean. I can remember when this was just an idea you were tossing around.
A lot of money, didn't it?
And here it is, uh, coming to fruition, so. Congratulations to you and all, all your colleagues that.
Thank you.
Worked so hard on this.
Thank you, well, we're thrilled about it, and it, it just really makes this building, uh, that much more exciting. Because beyond being a functionary aspect of the town, it gives us something creative to really offer to the town, and I anticipate seeing people traveling. The two miles it takes to get from their home to their town center and say, let's see this, popcorn, admission. And, and we can't fit drones in the room, so that's out of the question anyway. So let's do talk about that, because I think that I'd like to hear any goals you all have for this project, and, you know, with the enthusiasm that I've been able to muster up to make it happen. Let's, let's do this and get, I believe we have a, a speaking engagement on October eighteenth. And it would be nice to have the theater room looking pretty decent for that as well.
It's aggressive target, but.
Yeah, that's very aggressive.
Do everything we can.
Person is what got us this far.
Three seventy fives the di- the event that, um, Jack's referencing, you know.
They have told us they think they can do it for the Christmas, for the holiday stroll is what we're hoping for.
So, um, just for, for tonight's purposes, the nuts and bolts, so we have a letter from the funds that were raised, we're on behalf of the Friends of the COA. And that donation of fifteen thousand dollars, and the town has committed, when we closed out, um, the remaining amount for the building improvements at all, at large. Uh, a match to, to get us over the finish line, to close the gap of, of the final cost associated with the project, but, um. Acceptance tonight, and then we will go out to bid, following thirty B procurement law, we'll take the lowest bidder. Um, and then come back with a contract for that, uh, at a meeting, hopefully, we will turn that around, uh, possibly even for the meeting on the sixth.
We actually have the bids in.
We have the bids in.
We, we're waiting for one more bid that we need to get, um.
So what the final scope was, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause the last time we spoke was a week ago, and they've been moving on this and doing great work. It's gonna be a curtain, uh, formal curtain, we met with vendors, talked about engineering, how we're gonna hang it, which will be on the backside on the beam. It'll be a, a very high quality curtain that's gonna be used, something we've heard from Tom Rose and other groups that have used that space, that'd be a nice enhancement. Um, second, we looked at all types of visual, audio visual, meaning specifically a screen. So right now, we have a metal nineteen seventies vintage screen, maybe even earlier, that's clunky, you've seen it if you come to the trash meetings. Or the other presentations up there, we can do better, and so we realized pretty quickly, Jack's point, while we were looking at the curtain, we realized. We need to do this with this, we can't do them separately, cause they're, they're intertwined, and then we said, well, if we put the screen up, right now, we have a, a, a projector, but. You know, what can we make an investment in that's more of a, we kinda put that together, found this odd-ended table piece with wheels, and we wheel it out. Similar, but we're gonna do something that's, that's a little more focused and po- purposeful to meet that screen need. Which will be a good sized screen that we can do movies on and other types of activities. We looked at putting it up on the ceiling, we looked at putting it up the back wall, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars to do that. So for the time being, at the very least, and maybe in the future, we look to pivot to doing something like that with another future fundraising campaign. Will be to buy a nice purposeful cart with a projector that we can house in one particular location. And bring out when we bring the screen down for, for activities, so it's the three pieces of what we're looking to do on this.
So can I just, so for the curtain, I just wanna add to it, um, so it is a burgundy velvet curtain, fire retardant, of course. In the front, um, in the back, there's gonna be a black velvet curtain that will block off the two windows that are back there. In case there's a daytime performance, so that will be split down the center, so that if they need a window open. They can slide to front or back, it also allows back access if somebody needs to go, you know, back exit. Um, and then on both sides, there will be curtains that slide across, there's beams that come along the side. Which allow people to be to the side of the stage in order to, if they have dress, if they, you know, are just waiting to come out. Um, that gives them space to move around and not be seen, um, by the audience, so, there's actually, um. Like four parts to the curtain.
And the one of those.
I had to do the demo.
The one on the left will also be accessible friendly for people coming up the elevator onto the stage, so we've arranged for there to be a bend in the pole. To accommodate anybody who needs to get access to the stage.
A thoughtful.
For the elevator.
And I know the ca- uh, the Friends of the Library were actually looking at the sam- pretty much simultaneously came to us saying. We need to put enhancements up in the public hall, specifically looking to AV. But the, you know, last time the representative from the Friends came, um, I said, hey, good news, mission accomplished.
We're moving.
We have the money, and we have a scope of work that meets your needs, meets the COA needs and the broader community's needs.
So did you say they are going to put up a, um.
The screen will be.
We are gonna have a screen, a screen.
We are doing the screen. That's, so the curtains are just pulled by hand, but the screen will be a remote.
And it'll be significantly larger.
No pul- for the, for the curtains pulleys.
For the curtains, yeah.
The back one is a walk-by, that doesn't have a pulley, that's just a walk back, the front one does have pulleys to pull it down.
So you can close the curtain on somebody.
You can close the curtain on somebody.
As, as, as I recall, this started as an acoustic program.
Yeah.
It is a good idea.
I, I, I hope. A- and you've already told me you're moving beyond that, and you have my support to do that, because it needs to be a community center. I, I don't believe there's anybody in this room, except me, that will remember the Village Players.
Yes.
That used to perform up there, and we used to go up and watch performances upstairs on that stage. Uh, theatrical performances on a, on a fairly regular basis. Uh, I hope we can get back to that someday, because there are people in town that would like to be part of that kind of a. Theatrical production, in my opinion, and if they had a place to do it, it ought to be here.
Yeah, well, we're that much closer to that goal, you know, when I sat here sort of tenuously two months ago, I, I knew that we could do it, but I didn't have the money in hand, so. Your, your wish will be.
So we start another fundraiser, that's all we keep doing.
Phase two, there's always a phase two.
So piggybacking on that, it, we keep mentioning acoustic improvements, but what we mean is that the curtains will, what, deaden?
Sound absorption.
It'll only do some of it, we've been told that, um, we probably should, and we could get donations for quilts for the sides as well. And the back of the room.
Okay.
Cause it will need additional stuff, the panels are all there, there's no panels on the back part of the wall, just the sides and, and the stage, um, side.
The plans to see how it goes and then.
When we did the town hall update fifteen years ago. We recognized that there needed to be some acoustic treatment, so we, we, we bought those panels. That got fixed to the wall, and it helped, but it didn't fix, it didn't fix the thing. And, uh, we need to do more than that probably, and, um, I'm in favor of that.
There are so many suggestions about way to do that, first of all, people sitting in the room absorb a lot of the sound, so bodies alone will do that.
Yeah, it helps, yeah.
cushions on chairs, um, you know, drapes, any, any amount of fabric that we have in there will stop the bounce, that high ceiling. Is, is a, a little bit of a.
It's a problem, yeah.
There really should be panels coming down.
We talked about doing, uh, hang down, uh, balances, is that what, is that the word? We talked about doing that fifteen years ago, but at that point in time, we were running out of money, and so.
Right, exactly. So we'll look to the future on that and, and, and make do with what we have as of right now, but I, I do see that we'll just keep improving it over time.
I can't wait, thank you so much for all of your work, I mean, it was, wherever I was around town, and if I saw Jack. He would come up and sell a calendar to somebody I was sitting with.
He was so good, I bought two.
I was gonna say, sometimes a second and a third calendar.
So if you need anything sold, contact Jack.
The Brooklyn Bridge is for sale.
To the meeting, um, over in the small conference room, and they had this picture, which is the old school.
Wow, there it is.
So if you want to take a look at it, that's, uh, that's when we had the chairs and then.
Wow, that's incredible.
What a shame, I don't have some of those chairs.
That's what we're looking forward to, isn't it?
Kevin doesn't know which camera to show it to.
And we think about speakers, we want to stand at that podium, because I think we could do a pretty nice job of bringing speakers in.
I, I originally, I think you were thinking of a black curtain, but, um, that was the red one, so you, you're right.
So that was cost effective, that's why we were going black. But then, talking to a few people that are involved in theater, they all recommended to go for the burgundy, plus it's our town color.
Yeah, so it's a great.
Yeah, so we decided.
And they also taught us a great deal about, you know, how to pull a curtain closed and open. Now, a pull cord is the better way to go, if you go with electricity, the hum sound is everywhere, only including your curtains. So I had these fancy notions about electrifying everything, but no, one doesn't do that in the theater, I guess.
Plus it breaks down and repairs.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I was about to say that because of the program and where this thing might be going. Uh, I know that Kathleen's not going anywhere, and you can't either.
I can't afford to mind my way out of town. No, you're right, we'll stick with this.
So long, I don't know, you're not going anywhere anyway, I know.
So is the amount for the motion fifteen?
Yes.
Move to accept the donation from the Friends of the COA, and the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to be used for create hall improvements.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, Jeff, thank you.
Keep going and don't let funding be a problem.
We'll never let that get in the way.
We can get there somehow.
That's right, there's always something out there.
Always something.
Alright, then we'll move on to hopefully for the last time, a discussion of our. Didn't we? Yeah, we voted. Everybody voted.
Just voted the current, yes.
Yeah.
Right, hopefully for the last time, we'll move on to our town goals. Uh, at least discussion and hopefully acceptance of, and then we can move on to implementing. Um, so the town goals, Kevin worked them up, moved them into the. Primary and secondary, uh, that's what you would see the latest version on board docs. Uh, I checked it, it was everything that we agreed to, so. I don't know if any folks had any final, hopefully, parting, parting words.
I think it looks good, and I think your idea of, uh, prioritizing the two levels and the method you suggested to do it worked out well.
Thank you. I think we're earlier than last year.
That's, that's the goal, that's a, that's a big deal. Actually, is it on our goal?
Well done.
Goal, go sooner.
I will say your font sizes are inconsistent.
Well, let's not go into the styles and all of that.
Well, for instance, the second most important goal under town services is to make sure the rail trail gets a shed. It's an eleven point font instead of twelve point font. I'm a little surprised we think that's more important than bylaws and PFAS and IT priorities, but I wasn't here for it. So I'll let it be, but it is an eleven point font. And also, if the ECDC needs a new pop-up tent next year, let's make sure that's a goal. Townwide goal to make sure they get a tent, or a new copier for border health, whatever. Okay.
Do we need a tent?
I don't know, but if you do, it's now a goal, individual needs of committees are now townwide goals.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I, I think that's cool, but I don't think we need to make that a goal, I think that.
We have.
Uh, well.
It's a goal.
The tent is a goal.
I'm saying that an individual need of a committee is now a townwide goal, a primary townwide goal.
There are issues like that, that, that can be brought up at any time at our meeting, and we can talk about that.
Yes.
Rather than making it an annual town.
This I agree with, but I'm not gonna stand in the way of anything here, this is fine.
Any other discussion? The first is, is there any discussion? No, we haven't had a motion yet.
Move to approve the FY twenty twenty six town goals.
Second.
Now, is there any other discussion?
I could debate it forever, but I'm not going to, thank you, thank you, I appreciate this.
Chairman, if I just say one thing?
Yeah.
Just wanna say thank you for everyone's efforts in helping create these goals, it was a team effort, all of us, to try to prioritize. And put forward what we think is this coming year's priorities. And, um, I think each year we get a little bit better, and a little more focused and, um. And I really appreciate how we went through our business this year, and I think we have a solid amount of goals. And myself and the team have already started to review this, we're excited to get to work to accomplish all of them.
And I would just say, a lot of these are gonna fall on Kevin and his team, obviously, but some of them need one of us to. Kind of be a cheerleader and spearhead things too, so.
Well, I, well, I wouldn't, I'm obviously gonna be, continue to volunteer to expedite the review of the senior tax assistance.
Without doubt, I'm sure you would, and I expect you would.
Oh, well, thank you, so I think, so, um, maybe we can talk about that at the work meeting coming up in October.
If we're ready to talk about it, sure.
If you're on the agenda.
I'll be ready.
Yep.
Alright.
I, I don't know whether you, you need to, uh, uh, assign somebody to be the monitor of the goals. I, I think we should all do that, I mean, it, it's our goals, and I think we all ought to be looking at those goals all the time. And bringing up, whenever anybody's got a comment about those goals, we bring them up and. If, if something's not going the way it ought to be, then somebody should bring it up, and if.
Did we talk about having like a quarterly review, or do I remember that correctly?
We did.
There's biannual.
And that'd be a good idea, review them once in a while, and, and when anybody in this group wants to bring up tho- a, one of those goal issues. I think you ought to be, bring it up at one of our meetings.
It wasn't, that, the quarterly review was not discussed in our goals meetings, I think it was discussed in your review.
Oh, I don't think I was there for that.
Same, same.
That sounds fun.
Proposed having this. Just an update, like, oh, we're working on this.
Okay.
We, we will commit to the communication, we talked about that as a goal.
Right.
But that's a lot of times how we're facing, how do we communicate with the community and get feedback, I think.
Of course.
That communication is intrinsic, that it's part of what we do as a team here too, and we're constantly communicating on, um, what we're doing and how we're doing it.
I, I think that's an example, though, Boyd, what I was trying to say, maybe we don't have a spearhead, but the whole discussion about communication. Is going to be an agenda item at some point, where we, we're evaluating everything and deciding what, what we do. Maybe Kevin's done most of the work by then, but this is not something that we say, congratulations. Put it on the shelf and come back and.
Well, uh, maybe the quarter rev- review would be a good idea, um.
Yeah.
The way I explained to the team when I shared where we were, is I said, these are things to help guide our work on a daily basis. It's not that everything we do has to be solely focused on this, and when there's things that are purposeful goals, very tangible. We want to achieve those projects, we'll get it done, if it's a broader one, you know, the efforts to balance the budget, for example. That's how all the departments work, trying to make sure they put forward the most, um. Cost efficient and focused budget possible, um, as an example is what we will do, so. It's, it's both layered within what we do, but also project specific.
See, as a result of going through this process, I think we've established a priority. And everybody in this group probably has a surpri- a, 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 a priority item that they'd like to have pursued. And Bob already brought up one, one of his, and I think we ought to pursue it, and he'll bring it up again. And we all have our own issues, uh, that fit into that goal program, and we can bring them up as necessary. Uh, in a board meeting, in my opinion.
And I think we talked about this at the very beginning of the process, after we conclude these goals, one of the things I'm hoping to do is schedule time with each of you individually to talk about. Priorities for you as an individual select board member as well, um, so that's something we'll be scheduling in the weeks to come. Anyway, just in time for the budget.
Just in time.
Just in time.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We were passed, thank you for everybody's attention and time and effort on that, um.
Just, thank you, Sam Warren, who's not here tonight, uh, Calderon, Sam Calderon, for her work in helping. Taking all of your information, aggregating it, gave us a good base to work from.
As always, she's irreplaceable.
She's good. Maybe not irreplaceable, she's good.
Well, I don't.
Cemeteries are full of irreplaceable people. She's not irreplaceable.
And Marshall knows where those cemeteries are. Alright.
I mean, she's very valuable, I, I agree with that.
Alright, well, if you wanna downgrade Sam, you go right ahead.
Let's, let's instead move on to select board updates, and I'll mix things up and turn this way first.
Oh, boy, okay.
What are we gonna do now?
Select board updates.
Ooh.
So we had a listening session on Saturday, Marshall and I were there.
I hope I didn't miss one.
No, you did not.
I saw the emails, and I don't think I was scheduled, but, uh, I am scheduled for October. Marshall, and you were there.
We were there, along with one representative from, um, Adrian Tenny from, um, the school committee. We, I'll say, we had two residents attend, um, and we talked about a variety of items. And concerns, so I will say, one of the things I did, well, we learned this in a previous li- uh, listening session, but. This came up again this time, and I think it's important. Uh, one of the individuals heard about the listening session by way of the library, um.
Newsletter.
Newsletter, thank you, I think of the word newsletter. Um, and that's not the first person that's come in there, because I usually try to ask, like, how did you hear about this? And, um, so that library newsletter is, is really getting the word out on certain things, so I did have the opportunity to go and thank Sean for.
And I feel like that might have been the only place it was advertised this time around.
Maybe.
I don't think it made it onto, uh, our social media channels.
I don't remember seeing any.
I didn't see it at all.
The scoop might be another place to add it, because we, we have the dates, so.
In the front, sign up front.
Yes.
I know you hate it, I think it's a good idea.
That's a good one, um.
Is there somebody that regularly posts, has a job to post stuff on social media?
That would be our communications person, Stephanie.
Yes.
Uh, semi rhetorical question, so maybe they could just put something out there two weeks, one week ahead of time.
Normally it is.
I don't know that she knew about it this time, is my thought.
Maybe I should.
She can't post what she doesn't know.
Should I send, send it to her, the schedule?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Sure.
Um, the other item is, I'm just gonna go on record as saying. The viewership is only Verizon right now, because Comcast isn't working, so I'm crossing my fingers that we can get that fixed.
We have, uh, Jonathan, who's our person now, that's, um, and Comcast are meeting tomorrow. I think at nine thirty, so try to find and troubleshoot the box that is, um, failing, is failed, and will allow the broadcast to go out of Comcast.
It might not seem like a big thing, but I know it is when it comes to relicensing, how many days they've not been accessible to the public. So.
I, I know we've been, I mean, we've had two meetings set up, three meetings previously set up, that for one reason or another, someone had to cancel. Um, first one, wrong person for Comcast came, wasn't the right engineer. Second one, there was a conflict with our person, the third, it was the same, and now this is the, the next, next best time for people to get together, it was just tomorrow. But people who wanna view us can certainly watch us live online through the on-demand. And also watch our videos, um, that get uploaded in the day fol- days following our meetings.
On demand.
On demand.
I would say.
I can show you afterwards, but if you go to our on-demand link, um, button, our widget on the website. It, um, will take you to all of the posted meetings, uh, videos that you can watch, and there's also a button there that you can watch live. The video while it's being broadcasted.
Okay.
And we're also still, we talked about this before, still exploring the, the Facebook Live, the YouTube options as well. As an alternative to just being able to go on on-demand on our website, because it's not always the most intuitive way to watch live, uh, in two thousand twenty five.
So on-demand can be watched concurrently with the meeting while it's going on and as it's recorded.
Can watch yourself right now if you want.
Okay.
We'll do it later.
Uh, two more quick items, uh, just a friendly reminder that the Rotary Fall Foliatron is October nineteenth.
It's nineteen, eighteen? It's the nineteenth.
Or eighteen.
Is it the Saturday?
No, it's the Sunday.
It's on Sunday, it's nineteenth, alright.
You can't go because.
My daughter's birthday.
Yeah.
But she can run.
It's.
I'll check to see the birth that's airplane.
She can run, and then you can run.
My ten-year-old's gonna be excited first.
Yeah, and then she'll beat us.
Yeah.
And the last thing is.
She'll beat me, let's be honest, you two, you three will be fine.
Uh, happy birthday to Kevin.
I can't beat her.
Oh.
Tomorrow's Kevin's birthday.
Well, unless she's running.
What was that?
Tomorrow's Kevin's birthday.
He said he can't be here.
Oh, right.
Unless she's running.
What's that?
If she runs, then you would need to be here to celebrate her birthday run.
The one thing I wanna do on my ten-year-old birthday is to run a five K, or five miler, I'll be here.
There's kids running around the field.
Absolutely, she does that too, she loves that.
Anyways, Kevin's deflecting from the other birthday news here.
My last item is happy birthday to Kevin early, because it's tomorrow.
Yay.
And you'll be working.
I'll be there.
You'll be working.
Be here if you need me.
He doesn't look that old.
Alright, Mr. Jackson. You said four, right, I was counting.
I have, uh, I'm totally in favor of listening sessions. But I'm totally disappointed in the way they work. I don't think we get enough people there to really voice an opinion. I, I would love to have people come to the listening sessions and tell us what they want us to do. What they, what they expect out of us, and they don't show up.
They don't show up to our meetings either.
They either, no question about it, so.
Doug does. Doug, he doesn't come to the listening sessions though.
Maybe if we had it over Facebook.
Doug, Doug has got a commander that's telling him to show up, so we, we know that Doug doesn't. Doug doesn't necessarily show up because he.
Commander.
No, he showed up because he wants to, that's the crazy part.
That's a crazy.
We love having you, Doug, thank you for being here.
The point is, um, um, yeah, I'd like it to be more, we'd all like it to be more, but. Uh, I, we, we keep talking about this stuff, and it just.
I will tell you that even when people, uh, other people outside the committees represented don't show up. We have some excellent conversations between school committee, elementary school committee, Masco school committee, and the select board, and members of the FINCOM. So even if it doesn't, uh, serve its stated purpose of.
There's a lot going on.
Joining us, they have still proven to be worthwhile monthly discussions. And now imagine, if you're one of those people who complain that you don't hear enough or are not involved enough, you can get a front row seat and be part of a conversation. No, at the listening session, you can be part of a conversation that involves at least one member of the elementary school committee. One member of the Masco school committee, at least one person from the select board, and often at least one person from the FINCOM. You wanna be part of that conversation, it happens every month.
And like I said, it's a wonderful idea, we gotta continue it, and I hope we can continue to be there when anybody shows up.
Well, we're all for ideas, and I'm sure it's somewhere in our, our goals, that we all just passed something about listening sessions. We could have put something like increase turnout.
I don't know how you do it, but good.
That's what we've discussed, you know, how do we do it?
That's a struggle, I mean, it's just, it's a really difficult, especially Saturdays too, I mean, to be real frank, I mean, I'm a young parent, you're running against the sport.
And quite, quite frankly, when a new idea develops, and this is not a terribly old idea. But when a new idea develops, people begin to think about maybe. It's worthwhile, and I've heard about that, and maybe I should go, okay? A lot of people are afraid to come up and voice their opinion about issues, I, in my opinion, so. Hopefully it will grow, but we'll see it.
Alright.
I'm getting old, so I can't wait much longer.
Uh, Mr. Metz.
Um, so I'm, as Michelle has probably experienced, I got a couple of, uh, appointed. Uh, reminders about absence of Comcast broadcast. From, uh, one of the assistants at a local, uh, a local grocery store. And, uh, so, uh, I reported back what the status was, thanks to Kevin. Um, and I'm not sure Jim will retain all of it to relate to it accurately, but. Um, but I'm glad, uh, we're taking action on this, because she, she, uh, she misses the broadcast, she actually watches them. So we ought to, we're talking about getting citizen, uh, citizen participation, she actually. Citizen participation, she actually watches them, so the faster we can get that Comcast up and going, the better. Um, and she also mentioned something that I wasn't aware of, that the the church. The congressional church broadcast somehow run through town hall and they haven't been available on Comcast. Uh, which Kevin tells me that's a situation that exists, a a function that. Existed when he arrived here years ago, and we just kinda kept it up. So we'll find out what's up with that uh from the engineer. Now, the other thing is, I was thinking back, I always talk of listening sessions, I was thinking about uh maybe a year or so ago, when I was at a listening session where. A citizen actually came in with a complaint and a request for action. And that was uh he had a neighbor who was leaving their garbage containers or garbage or their. Big item pickups out on the street, days and days, or maybe from week to week. Um, and wondered we had, if we had some sort of bylaw about that, which we don't, but I was wondering um if we could kinda like. Quiz Jason or something, as if if he might not know, but. I'm just curious whether having a more structured uh garbage program. You know, with with uh prescribed containers. That and nothing picked up beyond that, and more structured uh big items programs. Whether that's eliminated any problems we had about people leaving their. Containers and their garbage out for too long, too many days after pickup.
So that, if I could, that's that resident who um. Voiced the concern, the one who they were concerned with reached out to us after the program rolled. Saying they wanted more barrels, um because the number of families living in the home. And so we've, I had a conversation with him about certain things he needs to do, um.
To register as a multi.
Everything from reassessing the taxation because of the current use to all of it, so. It wouldn't surprise me if that's been improved, but if it hasn't. Probably also wouldn't surprise me considering the conversation, but um we have, we have had conversations, and I do think the formality of the program. Does help, because just putting everything out on the curb is not getting picked up, like it like it could have historically. Um, I don't think with that person particularly though, that they're gonna, like before they'd have all sorts of trash just hanging with different kinds of barrels. Bulk items are, now it's like, at least it's a fixated bin, and there's other places and locations in town where people. Might have a more clean establishments, but also leave it out on the curb as well. So that it's um it's, the the policy is that people bring it back. There are, I know of at least two, maybe three in Topsoil that tend they leave it out. I do think that program did clean up that particular area a little bit, because I haven't heard any complaints, and I have talked directly with that property owner.
Interesting, thank you.
Is is it a, is it a situation where trying to use old garbage barrels?
He wanted more barrels, and then he said, I have. I'm gonna use my old families living here, and I said Williams own is a single family. You get one of each, unless you want me to rezone you, and he said, well, no.
I was never here.
And while you're at it, please be courteous to your neighbors, thank you.
But in general, I just, the crack, the trash program seems to be going reasonably well, in my opinion, from what I see around town.
Our first two months, I think I had mentioned this, are tipping for the trash, the first month was fifty tons less. In July than it was a year ago, and fifty.
Fifty tons?
Static every year historically, what we think happens, multiple reasons why that happened, but.
You're not jumping ahead to.
I'm a little bit jumping around with trash, just coming up, drove it whole.
Well, let me just tell you this, I.
Next meeting.
I have no select board update, so we can just go right into the TA.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, you you don't count.
Uh, just another reason I love this town, driving by the town common on Saturday night, and they're setting up the Jumbotron. Uh, to have the the movie, movie night. And kids running around and, you know, you gotta love the fact that they're not terribly worried. Because we don't have traffic zooming all over the place, and it's a great reason I love the town. Um, alright, with the, I'll I'll end, back to you, Kevin.
Dr. Fields. Our field's back here, it's been something that's been on our radar, we've done a great job addressing beautification downtown. Beautification and improvements to the field services up at uh Clock Park and Pybrook. And the next phase is to work here, been working with superintendent in the facilities, the school's facilities, first to see Clifford, as well as a couple of members of the community, including one who represents. TA Bill King and Danny Lawn um around. How do we address this? And the first step was to understand septic on the on the property. And so we're working through that, but we had a really great conversation earlier today with um the two residents, the TA rep and the resident. Um, around what our plan would be, and the fact that we need some help finding the funds, and so. We talked about Jack helping us earlier with the the curtain, there might be another capo campaign coming up to help us support improvements on the Proctor Fields, which should be great. Because it is very visible in our downtown, whether people use it or not, it's near the rail trail, near the playgrounds, people see it. They see that it needs some help, um the team does a great job, but um at the same time, it's gonna need a one time. Uh leveling of the fields, re reedging, all of the the things that go along with it, and then resaw it and then irrigation, so. More to come on that, just wanna make.
Irrigation is important, because you gotta maintain it after you do all that.
Water is one of the most important things with keeping a field green. Albeit, they'll look like the spring in the fall, because typically in the summer, we want to, but that will help keep that root system going.
Plus it's a lot of labor to pull weeds in an infield. You know, I don't know how you do that mechanically without tearing up the the clay.
Well, we would, so we would be it would be well beyond that, so it'd be laser grading infield, putting your clay down, putting your saw down, putting irrigation system in. With the plan to put relocating a septic in the future, if and when necessary, out in left field of the baseball field and right field of the softball field. That corner there, be a raised um leaching field.
Yeah, leach field is a great way to keep the grass green.
We try to keep people off that, um if at all possible, we probably end up fencing it, but. Um, there is some really good efforts, some good teamwork between different people and entities within the community to try to make those improvements happen, and. Just wanna say thank you to Kerry Wilds as well, who's gonna be helping.
Do we have any ball teams interested in, or leagues interested in using it?
Babe Ruth would use it, um there's a conversation about, I have to have this with schools as well, about. Making it so it could potentially be a multipurpose, so you got another softball field. Um, I do, it is our only ninety by ninety by ninety by ninety big league field that we have, uh adult field. Do feel strongly maintaining that is important um for Babe Ruth, for the ITL and the Top Sealtories if they come back and. Like, you know, play a dozen games here each year, uh but we would have a commitment from Babe Ruth to play their a number of home games here.
Yeah, uh uh overgrown or dried out ball field really is kind of an eyesore. You know, so I think you're right, it's kind of a in indicator of town attentiveness.
And one of the difference differences between this and pie and clock is that we have to partner, we are partnered with schools, school grounds, so everything we do. Has to go through their vetting, has to go through their review, um so like the septic was about a four or five month process from discussion to actual execution of. Um, doing what we'd asked of assessment of where you can locate a new leach field. Um, but we're there now, and so now we can keep moving forward and keeping the people interested actively engaged, so that we can work with them to find funding. Um, and help us with the improvements is important.
I'd I'd just like to comment, I'd I'd be a little bit concerned about spending a lot of money. For the Proctor School Baseball Field for the kids in Proctor.
I don't think it would be for the kids at school.
Well, well, I understand, it's gotta be, if we're gonna spend money on the Proctor School Field, it's gotta be for people beyond. The Proctor School Kids, it's gotta be, it's gotta be for other people that wanna play. That are more organized, more involved in 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 the game of baseball.
Yeah, you'd have to, ideally, you'd want a a league.
Yeah.
A a.
Yeah.
Older um youth league or an adult league to be using it.
Yeah, that's what he just said, though, right, Babe Ruth and others.
Well, he mentioned that, I agree, and I, that's where we ought to be going, um and I'm in favor of that.
Got a great coalition of people helping us through the process, and like I said, wanna make sure the board was aware as we work through it, but it's uh. So a lot of work to be done, got against that partnership with the schools, that really matters on this one, and I think we got some good momentum, it was a great conversation today, that's why I wanted to share it with the board. I'm gonna move to um updates, uh we'll do PFAS in regional water. Um, so Bruce Tarj group, I've spoken about this and given updates in the past around that coalition of. Community of uh community leaders together, trying to find a regional resource. Under the auspice of sustainability, for our purposes, I I've always seen as the vehicle to help us with our PFAS potential issue. Um, I talked to the chair last week, um this isn't gonna be the full update, but it's just gonna be putting on the radar that. We're gonna have more conversations about PFAS uh in the meetings to come, maybe in a work session, et cetera. Talk about really what this is looking like, this is what I can say right now, it is fluid, it is very much a moving target of trying to identify. What the regulations will be tomorrow, there's discussion about the federal rolling back the four parts per trillion that. The last administration put in place, back up to the seventy parts per trillion, or wiping it out altogether through the EPA. Um, right now, though, it exists, so we have to start planning for what we need to do, and that's both what do we do locally? Or alternate options of going into Salem Beverly Water or MWRA? Um, what is the cost, what are the timelines, how much, if we do it under the auspices of regionalization, how much support can we get from the state and federal for funding purposes? Um, and really, we need to have a defined plan, and so we're, I've greenlit a study. Very high level study that we'll be doing based on studies performed over the last five years in the regional work. To help Topsoil identify what might be the best option to start considering around the PFAS, so Greg Crom's working on that. And then that will come, hopefully the next few months, we'll be able to talk back to everybody on what that looks like as we get through our capital planning.
Yeah, we've kind of been thinking we would wait for the definitive long term policy to be issued. Um, and it may be that there won't be such a thing, that it'll be kind of a pendulum, that'll go back and forth depending on.
I don't see.
Which group is in.
I don't I don't see the state going back on there, before the federal, the state had a twenty P P P B, P P M, P P T. Number, and that's based on the state's interpretation of scientific data through the Office of Research and Standards. They're they're not gonna go.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I don't even, I agree with you, that won't happen, but uh I think twenty P P is manageable for us, right?
The state's looking, the state's looking, the state, we are in compliance, we've been in compliance.
Yeah.
The state is right now as vocalized that they're comfortable with what the federal government's issued, which is four. Now the government, federal's looking to go back, and now the question is, does the state go down the floor anyway?
Right.
And so that's another unknown, and so there's this real nuance right now of having to start preparing to be meet requirements that could change. Or requirements that don't exist yet.
Yeah.
And what do the timelines look like around that, so we don't go out too aggressively and find out that the rules changed, and we don't.
Five fifty million dollars of equipment.
But we don't, but we don't, exactly, but we don't fall behind so much that we can't meet what a future requirement might be, so it's it's a very flu- like I say, it's very fluid. Um, but we're on top of it, and I think the consultants will help us really navigate the options, so let's lay it out. What I've done more recently in the last week in our last meetings with the regional efforts, I really put pressure on the the group to say, listen. Fo- five years ago, we sat at this table, I said, we need a plan, we know what the cost is, how much funding you'll support us with, and how quickly we can go. Because we knew the PFAS issue was over here, coming, coming, coming. I sit there, sat there Monday, and I said, we still don't have a defined plan, we still don't have a cost, we still don't know how much funding help we'll have. And we don't know what the timelines look like.
And and all of that would be premature in the absence of some certainty on the regulations.
They're looking at it, though, from a regional standpoint, of trying to draw water outside the Switch River Water Basin, and so they're looking at it from a sustainability, Top Seals. Our position has always been. Double inch, we want, whatever you wanna call it, kill two birds with one stone, whatever saying you wanna use, but we primarily said. Yeah, we'll have a seat at the table, because we always wanna partner, that's how we operate, till it doesn't make sense to us, but it makes more sense to us. Because we have to potentially solve for this PFAS that might, may or may not come in. So we've been at the front of the ta- at the first, you know, front center at the table when these meetings happen, we've been forefront of discussion, now we're pitching really hard to say. When we said that we really have to make decisions, move forward independently of a regional solution, and we're a vital part of this regional task force. Said, the only way we can go is if you if you if you phase this. Take something like a whenever Hamilton Top Sealed or a Danvers and Top Seal, and you hook up to a system, and you prove out the concept, proof of concept. And you get us money from outside sources to fund it, because we'll be the first one to go through that door with the regionalization, and that'd be a nice showing the funding coming through too. But the timelines are getting shorter and shorter, although the state and the federal's kind of fluxing, could give us a little bit more time on that. A lot in motion, but again, the chair and I spoke last week, and this is something I wanted to at least put on everyone's radar, and I will. Be back with more definition in the weeks or months to come around PFAS as things start becoming a little bit more clear.
The um, can the, in the absence of federal reduction to four parts. Um, can the state DEP go from twenty to four on their own, or is that legislation?
States are allowed to be ha- have to be as strict, have to meet federal standards, but can always be.
Right, I understand, but well, let's say the feds stay. Let's say the feds don't issue another regulation, or they allow it to stay at twenty, can the Massachusetts?
The fed regulation is seventies, or.
Well.
Four.
Yes, the state can be more stringent.
I'm not talking about the seventh, uh the state generally, I'm saying, who in the state makes that decision?
DEP.
To go from twenty to four, can DEP do that without legislation?
Yes.
Or does that require legislation?
That's part of their their mandate, is to regulate toxins in the environment.
They're independent of of any political uh legislation or anything that might come of that. As the chair said earlier, they're basing their findings and recommendations off the science, and so they're basically saying that this is. What we should be, now I would note too, historically, tops uh testing even five, six years ago, couldn't even test a twenty parts per trillion.
Exactly, exactly.
And so the technology has moved faster, we tested right before we started building the um the the treatment facility. We tested for PFAS at that time, and we had zero traces, because the tests weren't grainly enough to pick up our low levels of zero to four, zero to six. Um, that we test that right uh typically, and so now the technology's gotten more grainly, we tested about four or five years ago, and we and we had a. We're there, they got us, they could pick up a trace of it. Um, we had DEP come in, they did a whole presentation, we sent letters out to the community, we explained what this meant, and it was mostly keep an eye on it. Um, you know, it was.
When you say that we were there, what what number is there?
Uh, we're testing at zero to four, five, six, and at the time, we tested at a point where. Um, mandated notification was required, um and it was right at the time where the Board of Water Commissioners was decommissioned. And the Water Department fell under myself, and the first thing we had to do when we took it over was send letters out to everybody in town, which they received. And we had over a hundred people on a Zoom call, because it was during COVID, um listening and asking questions, and DEP came in, they swooped in, because we were in the first communities in Massachusetts. Take that step to do the test, and then when we reported it, it was an asset, you guys gotta come in now and explain what this means. Uh, you know the science, it's your regulations, and they did, and they did a great job, and it, I think it set a lot of people's mind at ease. But it's something that we've kept on our radar, and we've done the regional, water's always part of our conversations, it's probably something that comes up at least once a week, if not daily. In some capacity around PFAS, water resiliency, um.
Is it possible that our water supply, our natural water supply just has naturally fewer PFAS than some other communities?
There is no natural PFAS.
Well, um, there is, there is and there isn't, or there isn't and there is, I mean, the you get a certain.
Eliminate the word natural, and your question is a valid question.
Thank you, alright, so is it possible that Top Seals uh existing PFAS levels are. Continuously lower than other communities that we might be considering joining in our in water supply?
No, the two that we would look at, which is Salem Beverly, has carbon filtration, which is what we would have to invest in to remove the trace PFAS. Um, M D, MWRA does not have any trace PFAS in it, um it comes from the western part of Massachusetts.
Well then.
Lake Quavon, and then basically it ends at PB, this uh Salem Beverly ends at Wenham. None neither which, well, MW is willing to take more customers on, that's been said, but you have to pipe through Danvers, which we'd have to see if Danvers is interesting. And they've shown that they have their own pump stations, they're under the the PFAS, they have PFAS in their water. Um, they actually shut off a pump station, because it was producing more PFAS than the other ones, so they took that one pump station altogether to get compliant. Um, Salem Beverly has fifty million dollars worth of capital improvements in the facility, and their. Timing might be right, but at the same time legislatively, they only need to bring water to Salem and Beverly, not to any other communities, so that would. Be an act of state delegate, a state law to basically pass it and move it. There's a lot more, I didn't want to say go this deep today.
It it's it's huge, it's a huge issue and a huge problem. Question I had, and you answered it, I think, uh we've talked about this.
Question I had, and you answered it, I think, uh, we've talked about this regionalization for some time.
Yes.
Uh, the question I had, and you answered it, I believe, because you said the water coming out of Quavon does not have any PFAS.
That's my understanding.
Well, um, that's that's the answer to my question, but that doesn't justify spending ten million dollars. To join into a water supply system out of Quavon.
So it would have been paid twenty million to do it locally.
So just to, just to caveat this, what Kevin said before is a perfect example, we can't say there is no PFAS. The PFAS is below detectable limits, so if they invent something, but, yeah.
We have to look at water rates in these outside providers, we have to see if they're interested, there's other communities between us and the source and the piping. There's a lot going on with water.
When, when is the earliest deadline that we could possibly be fined if we're not in compliance, however that is determined?
Well, it was five years, it just changed, I'm checking right now, it just changed to two year extension on top of that, so. Um.
From the state or from the feds? Cause I've.
Two thousand twenty nine deadline, um.
My personal view is we should be following the state here, which is not going to be less stringent than the feds.
Dude, but there's a two year extension on that on the federal level, I've said to the.
Won't be less.
What I, what I indicated when the went from seventy to four, I had conversations with our state delegation, I said, oh. It is what, it is what it is, the federal government's coming in, I know the D E P is gonna have to drop to four or less. One thing we ask is not to cut our timelines any shorter than they are, cause it takes so much time to really do it right, so. I don't know if that D E P will respond in. Positive to that and give us some, some, some grace and time to get through this, especially with the uncertainty, but um.
You think it's likely that the state will go to four on its own?
I think it's more likely than not. But we only know when we, when they give us some more indications, and then finally pass a a draft. Um, reduction, if that's what they decide to do, and they'll get public feedback, this public feedback period, and then they'll make the final decision.
And the capital cost of meeting that, if we stay in Top Sealed, is probably predictable. The capital cost, if we get involved in some reg- evolving regional thing, is probably unpredictable.
It, yes and no, I think that we could tell you right now that it's gonna be significant costs, not only to do the carbon filtration on our own facility. But also to invest in the other infrastructure that is starting to get long in the tooth and needs to be replaced. Um, that would be something we would abandon if we went regional, like a pump station, or two. Um, those have, you know, eight, eight figure numbers we're talking.
But those fields have supplied the whole town for generations, and we've really contemplated playing a regional thing that would abandon them?
Potentially, there's a lot of unknowns, so you could supplement our current water sources, but we still have the PFAS issue if D E P drops it down. So then if you take their water that does zero testing, tr- no traces of PFAS. With our zero to four, zero to five testing, take the average of two and a half, we're in compliance of it, maybe use some of our water and some of their waters. Maybe you abandon the entirety of it, because the feds or the state come in and offset the costs on the investment. Instead of us spending twenty million dollars locally to put carbon filtration through the pump stations. We're now running lines at a cost of ten million dollars, but the feds are putting in fifty percent match on it. So now we're on the hook for five million dollars of debt service, we have no PFAS issues, and we have a much larger quantity of water coming in.
Wherever we run the lines from, we probably have a PFAS screening investment also.
No, so, again, this is probably much larger than a one, I just wanna let, the chair asked me to bring it up, so I did. Um, there's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of unknowns, and I think to get into all of the different scenarios, there's a lot of studies that have been formed. I mean, Greg and I can spend two hours probably giving people an update on where we are, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want me to table this, or you want me to continue?
Yeah, I think we can, we can table it, but we've had PFAS on our goals for a year or two.
Yeah.
And I don't know that I necessarily have the path, so that's what I want us to get to, twenty twenty nine deadline. Figure it takes.
Today.
Right, understood, but as of what we know today.
It's plus, they just gave us a two year extension, so it's really twenty thirty one.
Right, so we can sit on our hands for a little bit.
Well, the state comes in and matches the twenty twenty nine now.
Ri- right, no, but based on what we know right now, and if you figure what, it's probably two years liberally for construction. We'd probably have to be at town meeting, asking for some giant debt the year before that. Then we're looking, probably having to make decisions by twenty seven.
We have to make decisions this year, if we, if the five year window is what D E P decides to to land on.
So this, this just laying out at the highest level, when do we need to decide what, based on what, was all I wanted to bring up.
I, I would come in, I think we can rely on our state government to give us some guidance. I am not totally enhanced with the ability of our federal government to give us any guidance on anything today. So, I don't know where we would get from our federal government, but um, that's.
It would be a large state bond bill, at this point, I agree, I think there was a lot of the funding that may have been available in the past, probably won't be available today. Or tomorrow, um.
Isn't it likely that if uh the state said, we're gonna go to four, and we're gonna test everybody, that there'd be? Half the communities in the state or two thirds would be saying, you know, I need you, the state, to give me five million, ten million, twenty million per community. It could be, it could be half a billion dollars for this.
So there's a low interest rate program the state offers that you have to apply for, and last year when we applied for the water tank. We looked at the list, we didn't get that low interest rate state, uh, we still, we were, it was like fifty basis points, it wasn't a lot, like. We have a good bond rating, so we were right there, but um, the state basically, he gave you a list, and it was like, I don't know, he gave out maybe call it a hundred grants. Or eighty grants, something like that, every single one of them was for PFAS, whether it was a study of PFAS, whether it was design of a PFAS facility, whether it was a construction of a PFAS facility. The state's basically pivoting all their money and all their opportunities PFAS, cause they know it's a giant. Undefunded mandate that's coming down, that towns and cities are gonna have to address, not all, Salem Beverly. No PFAS currently testing it, zero PFAS, no traces of it being picked up. Quavon, those communities are on the the right side of it, Hamilton, when they built, they built a carbon filtration, so they don't have PFAS issues there either. But there's communities like Wentham that if they built a facility right now, which is something on their radar, if it's not regional. They're probably gonna have to build it with carbon filtration, which adds a cost to the build out, they have a cost there.
Places like Lynn and Lawrence and. Imagine telling them they need a fifty million dollar facility.
How about Boxford? Lynn has its own water supply, so I wouldn't just automatically assume they have a PFAS problem.
I don't know.
So, there's a lot of moving parts, that's um.
There's a whole bunch of things, whole bunch of questions that haven't been answered yet. It's a, I think it's an issue all over the country, uh, in my opinion, so.
Let's say this, we are on it, we're in the front, we're front and center on every discussion for regionalization, because, but the timelines are getting shorter and shorter and shorter. And so I think, what I led with, I'll just say, we're very grateful for the regional effort, we're very grateful for Bruce Targ's leadership on that, and the other communities that are at the table. Um, and I do appreciate that, I feel like they are finally hearing us timed, timing is really matters, and we've gone five years without any of those four things I listed earlier. Plan, how much funding sources and timing, and I think hopefully that'll allow us to get a little bit closer and understand if those options are available. We are having side conversations with those op entities and those towns that are between us and the sources to see if they're interested in participating anyway. Um, I have an update in school app. Um, it continues before, we have the sign P N S. Um, going through um, design of the road right now, I have a meeting with Tim Collins and the engineer on that, which means ten school lab with a sidewalk, improvements with lights, granite curbs. Um, and the head walls of the bridge there being replaced and improved as well. Um, it's, uh, I know Tim and his team are working on the design of the building. There are some limitations on the size and this constraints, such as what you need for overhead in the kitchen as an example, and what exists. And how are they gonna make that work with some of the structural components of the building? Uh, but they're working pretty hard to try to find the the best possible solution for that space to bring that, the restaurant that is is expected to top seal. Um, but there's still a lot of work to be done on that, um.
Is the ru- the road, so to speak, from beyond the bridge onto the property, is that? They're looking at improvements to that?
That'll come when they redesign the site plan.
Okay.
They're not, cause right now, it's, I mean, literally you could just take a a spray can and put a hundred by fifty, and you have a road. But when they improve the entirety of it, they'll probably, it'll probably look like part of the parking lot, it won't be defined necessarily, but that will be the. The public way associated with the parking lot, design has to come in before we can say that.
Okay.
But we're talking about improvements up to the bridge at this point. Um, Alfalfa Farm is, a liquor license request has come in last week. A box is taking it up to make a recommendation to the board and to meet with the co- the applicant. They did receive all three of their state licenses they need for their purposes, cause they brew, they create and manufacture on site, they, and they're agricultural based. They have state licenses they need primarily, but one local license that'll come through us. So more to come on that, just putting that on your radar, but overall, the project continues with board, have regular conversations with the the owner of the property. As he's working his way through the different boards and committees to make sure they have what they need to be uh efficient in their processes.
And you're excited about?
I am super excited, I think it's gonna be an incredible addition, we we saved a farm that is iconic.
I agree.
And I think the use there is not just a winery, we talked about brewery, we talked about even distillery, we even talked about, so you add that on top of everything. It's gonna be a drive to bring people to Top Sealed, and uh, it's right on the edge of town, so traffic in and out of the, you know, main streets and and all that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but we talked about traffic earlier, we can handle quite a bit of traffic pretty well, and I don't think this is gonna bring that type of traffic, but I do think that um. You know, it's gonna be a great asset, it's a great, great enhancement to existing.
And it's a known, well-recognized brand.
Yep, and then um, do you want me to cover trash tonight? I'm just looking at the time, is it, do you want me to keep going?
Sure.
Uh, trash, we had a trash component earlier, so we had our first two bills for July and August, um, from Gmail. Our, as you know, our tipping fee for trash is a hundred and ten dollars per ton. Our variable costs, we pay exactly the same cost, there's no markup, but we pay in the, on the recycling that goes uh down to to Charlestown. And so we were estimating that to be about forty to sixty dollars typically.
Did you say we pay for recycling?
Yes, we go, we, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Less than trash, though.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm, so because of the tariffs, though, it's getting close to trash. Um, they're up to eighty nine dollars per ton on the first two bills.
How does that work compared to, how, how?
Cause when they, when they take the, the, this is according to Mellow, when they take the recyclable goods, they take it to like India and other countries. They mark up the goods coming in, in retaliatory tariffs, and what's been sent up, so we are seeing some of those residual impacts here in Topsfield.
So we're exporting trash.
Nope.
Recyclables.
Recyclables, and we're getting a tariff, retaliatory tariff on it.
I, that's according to Mellow, why I said, explain to me why you told me it was gonna be sixty or seventy dollars at the most, and we're talking eighty nine, you show me, you show me the data. And he goes, it's all on a barge heading out to another country, and that's why it's going up. So, the good news, that's the good, that's the bad news, the good news is, is that our first two months have been significantly less. Uh, amount of trash and greater amounts of recycling, meaning peoples are changing their habits and behaviors, which is good. We have fifty percent of people in town now, a fifty percent increase in the number of composters. That's all outs- outsourced, we also have, and outside of our tip, that just comes off of our our tally. Um, July was interesting, I think a lot of people, there's a number of reasons we think those numbers, fifty tons is a lot, went down fifty tons, like I said earlier. People are now recycling more than they were, people are composting. I think there was a large amount of cleanouts that took place in the months leading up with people and their stickers, getting stuff out, so that month of June, which we still haven't seen the bill for. From Republic is probably significant, um, if we see the bill. And um, basically, there was a number, number of things I think ju- that drove, because then in August. It was about a thirty ton reduction from the year prior, wasn't as great. Net effect is that what we budgeted, we're at about three percent under budget to date of the first two months. We cut that budget down super tight. If, only thing that changed outside of what we predicted, cause we did think we're gonna see, not as much, but we saw trash reduction and recycling increases coming. Was that tipping fee for the recycling going up as much as it did, if that had stayed down, we'd probably be about ten percent under budget right now.
The cardboard in the newspapers and papers, they, they do that domestically, don't they? They use that domestically?
I'm not sure, I don't know. Cardboard's worth money, though.
Strikes me as odd, a two X increase.
It's not two X, it's it went from sixty bucks to eighty nine bucks.
Hmm, I thought it was forty to, forty to sixty, forty was like best, best case, like the lowest of the.
Between a fifty and a hundred percent increase.
Yeah, and hopefully it's temporary, but right now, that's, and I know, I asked Jason to look into it more, if there's other options to put it. He said he's working out a deal with another hauler to off take it, and he said, if you get a better rate, I'll just go there, so that's fine with me, doesn't matter where you put it, as far as I'm concerned.
Um, that's uh, yeah, if we s- see a couple more months of of better than expected. Progress on the trash versus the recycling, it might be worth putting some information out, you know, you're.
I'm sensitive to it, I've been talking to those conversations, cause things are going really well, and I think people would probably, some people might un. Have opinions on why that is, that might stir up conversations that we've had in the past. I'm gonna be really PC on that.
Well, I don't think people are suddenly gonna go, you know what, you were right, we were wrong, sorry for yelling, thanks for cho- showing us the way.
Well, it's not, it's not the ten, or the audience is not the ten or fifteen percent of the people that. Are um vociferous on this subject, you know, it's the others that kind of in the middle, that kind of think about things.
Think it's early, take a victory lap, uh, to be honest with you, that's my personal opinion, I think from a PR standpoint, I think we get a little more distance, maybe we. We do more of a bigger case study on how this has gone, and lump in all the elements, cause I'm getting calls from multiple towns and cities looking to do the exact same thing we're doing. Being referred from D E P, um, who's used us as a model community, and we've talked about this, Mr. Metz in the committee war. As a model community that other communities could look to 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 replicate, and so I think, you know, locally, the numbers are working, right? Um, and I think that the vast majority of the community and the population have received it well, um, good feedback on it. And I think that we keep our head down, keep working hard, and see what the data shows maybe in a, in a year's time. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And three fif- three seventy five, mark the calendars, October eighteenth, three o'clock, um, starts the historical event. Um, by John Kinnon, four o'clock is the flag raising and proclamations, and then four thirty to about seven thirty will be the block party. On the COA patio, right next to town hall, we'll have a band, we're gonna have uh Alfalfa Farm. Show, having their beer, we're gonna have Marble Ridge Winery, our new winery coming into the restaurant, serving wine, we're gonna have the Whoopi wagon.
New partner at uh, at the, at the old highway garage.
We're getting, keeping this as local as we possibly can.
Was that the guy from Mandor?
Yes, yeah.
The Whoopi wagon will be there as well, um, Topsfield Fair is gonna be donating hay bales and some of their flowers to us as well, so we can decorate the plaza. Cause it'll be the weekend after the last day of the fair.
Do we have this schedule online? This all sounds great, that we gotta.
Flyer was done on Friday, I think, or it was approved this morning.
A little early, maybe, but yeah, it's coming.
Can't be too early.
One of the nice things we're doing is we're putting little flag, we're doing little flags, um, we get six hundred little flags made, Topsoil flags, there's a Topsoil flag. And we're gonna be Martha Morrison, John Kinnon, um, and the team, we're gonna be out there at the two elementary schools doing quick thirty minute presentations about the significance of three seventy five. Giving everyone a flag and inviting them with a flyer to come to our events, and so hopefully we'll have a nice turnout, and we're talking with. TCP and Tesco about doing the sponsorship for the the block party, so we'll be coming back at the next meeting for a a one day license from the board for that.
Thirty days.
Yeah, time to start the drumbeat.
It's big.
Can I ask for a five sentence or less update on the?
Can, hang, hang on, before we leave this, just so you know, it's listed as Topsfield three hundred sixty fifth birthday. On the uh webpage, on the calendar, which it's, it's not on the front page, you have to go to the calendar.
Three hundred and sixty five days in a year.
Yeah.
A typo.
Alright, so the calendar, i- it is listed on there, it's just listed with the wrong title, and I think it should be highlighted on the front page.
There you go.
Alright, sorry, five second or five bullet point.
Five sentence or less update on the legislation about the fairs. Being independent of time bylaws.
Easy, there is none.
Yeah.
There's no update.
And that's.
Nor do I think there will be for quite a while. The end of the legislative session is what we should keep in mind, which I think was January sixteen. Legislative session is what we should keep in mind, which is January sixteen. Which is when if anything hasn't been brought up by then, it is, has to be brought up again. Otherwise, it's dead from the current lives, I forget if it's January or December. Anybody remember?
I somewhat remember December thirty first, but that maybe just depends year to year, I mean, the governor rushing to sign stuff December thirty first.
Once the legislative session, the governor might have time to sign or reject things and then maybe the legislation does something.
Okay, so no news is good news.
Alright, and okay. Uh on correspondence, I'll point everybody to some very interesting and fascinating developments with Andrew's farm, if you weren't aware. Kevin hasn't been able to bring you up to speed on it, it's there in correspondence. And then I will ask, although Sam's not here, but I've been told that as chair, I have the power to adjourn a meeting my myself. Without asking for a motion to do so. Anybody know? Well, no, I said I should find out before I test it out and then we.
Does that make your life any easier?
I just like that power. Uh so are there any other motions? Any seconds?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor? All opposed, alright, we're adjourned.